May Council meeting in order, roll call please.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police. Alderman Strachey. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corn being present, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May have a motion approved in minutes April 29th, 2010.
So move.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Post motion carries. Council without objection and defer from our normal agenda. And at this time I would, well it's been my privilege, let me say preface this. It's been my privilege and I think the city clerk I believe has done it, no the police chief has done it, I know Mr. Murmers did it last year. And you okay Alderman Coles?
I can't, I can't see the button. Alright, it's on.
It's been my privilege to read to the 4th grade class over at Holy Ghost School and several of the other local city officials that participated. It's been our pleasure to do that and hopefully we'll be invited back next year. And this year, the class told me about a project that they did and there's a brief DVD and then we're going to introduce the members of the class and one at a time and if you'll go up to the podium, then you'll be on TV and you can see yourself tomorrow when it's rebroadcast. But at this time, Mrs. Thomasick, would you tell us a little bit about what we're about to see? If you go to the podium and if somebody would check and see if the microphone is on on the podium, Mr. Forrest or...
Good evening, everybody. I am so delighted to see my class here and their parents. It is an exceptional class and we are taking a leaf out of the book of our Wooddale council. The mayor has come to our class and he's inspired us. We do have class meetings patterned after your council meetings and at one of our meetings we decided that we wanted to do something to save our environment. And so we set about starting a project and doing some advertising and some work around the community. We did a little bit of picking up outside of our school, building the post office and various areas in Wooddale so that we could set our education in motion and do something for real, in real life. These are very talented children, they have been a pleasure to teach and they're very enthusiastic about their community. They've learned a lot about Wooddale and they're very excited about being here tonight. I would like to introduce all of them to you, we'll do one at a time. I'd like them to come to the microphone and introduce themselves to you. And you are first Alexa, here we go. Would you like to introduce yourself? Just say your name.
My name's Alexa DeCarlo.
Okay, and who is next? Let's line up here folks. This is the quietest my class has been in all year. We're going to have to do this more often.
I'm Elena Fernandez.
That's right, come on up. They are beautiful children.
Hi, my name's Elastia Calzante.
Let's get into a line here so we can do it a little bit more quickly. That's...
Hi, I'm Dylan Mead.
Dylan, say your name so we can understand.
I am Dylan Mead.
And he's a wonderful young man. Alright.
Hi, I'm Vito Chacha and I'm 10 years old.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Prada.
Hi, my name is Sydney Zappozzol.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Maraz.
Hi, my name is Julia Storzansky.
Over this way, so alright.
Hi, my name is Jacob Kowalski.
My name is Nicholas Montgomery.
Hi, my name is Peter Woodwich.
Hi, my name is Jack Siemens.
Hi, my name is Andrew Hill.
Hi, my name is Ricky Reese.
These are our future leaders and I am so privileged to have had, been able to spend a year with them. They will, they will make Wooddale proud of them, I guarantee it.
And would you say a little bit about the DVD we're about to watch?
Well, during the past few months, we've been doing this DVD, we've been doing a project on saving the environment and we decided to make a DVD for you mayor. And we accomplished that task. You will see a classroom meeting, it's a meeting that we, that we're supposed to hold every Friday if we have time. We generally get it maybe once every two weeks, we have a meeting once every two weeks. And instead of a president, we, excuse me, instead of a mayor, we're, we start out with a president and vice president, we have a double treasurers to count all of our money. And we also have two secretaries. You will see how we started it out as a meeting and we ended up actually doing great job in the community. I would like to say this. We put some posters in both the Wooddale library and the Itasca library and we got great many compliments from Itasca, which is a miracle in itself. And we're delighted to do it. I will also say that the Wooddale library people came out today and did a wonderful job with our children and I would like to put a plug in, moms and dads, to get the kids over to that Wooddale library, I think they are phenomenal, they have wonderful programs for you. Your tax dollars are very well spent. Thank you.
Great job, great job. Mr. Forrest, we still looking for a musical act for Prairie Fest? You know, when I went to the, read from whatever the book was, I don't remember, but it was that we had a question and answer time afterwards and which covers kind of one of the questions later about getting involved in city government. And one of the guys, I don't remember who it was, somebody announced that they were running against me for mayor in 2019. Who was that? Chief? Take a picture of this guy, would you please? Vito is the name, now watch that guy. Okay.
He's on Wall Street.
Oh, Wall Street.
He's on Wall Street.
You will make, yeah, you'll probably make a lot more money on Wall Street. Now we have some questions, this is going to be the fun part of the evening. Andrew, I think you have a question for Alderman Roy Wesley. You want to pull the mic down a little bit?
What are you planning to do to encourage people to move to Wooddale and also could our town square be made more inviting?
Okay, let's go with the first one. The city is always working to make Wooddale a better place to live. In turn, we believe this encourage people to not only want to move to Wooddale, but to stay in Wooddale. Recent effort this area are to expand Prairie Fest into four days, improve of the five-year capital improvement plan to continue beneficiary efforts to the city. We also acknowledge we do not, we are not alone with this effort and this, this is why we work with other government agencies such as Wooddale Park District, School District, Library Districts to ensure all makings of the services provide our residents and potential residents the very best possibility. The second question, could, could our town center be more inviting?
Yeah.
Yes. The city recently formed a downtown redevelopment committee to work on this issue. And inviting town centers where people would go to is important to the community and this goes far beyond just buil- building new buildings or constructing a park plaza. It requires the development of places the community and visitors feel welcome in, what to use the most important want to return to. To do this, there needs to be activities, events, business locations and town centers that all work together to create this inviting environment. We just began our work, these efforts, so please stay tuned and be prepared to offer your opinions and help as we can do this without the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, with the video that I just seen, I was very touched with it and I want to give compliments to the class here and I feel very, very proud to have students like yourself and to help the community in any which way possible. Thank you.
Peter, do you have a question for Mr. Douthwaite?
Yes. Are there any plans for any new and fancy restaurants to be built in Wooddale?
Well, I have some bad news and I have some good news. The bad news is that the economy is not particularly good right now and there has not been much interest shown by any restaurant developers in building new facilities until the economy rebounds a little bit. The good news is that the state of Illinois is presently designing an extension of the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway from Itasca all the way east to O'Hare Airport and that extension will go right along Thorndale Avenue. And the city council has embarked upon a plan to build upon that extension of the Elgin-O'Hare and create a downtown corridor or a Main Street corridor, which we hope will be the future home of office buildings, hotels and some restaurants. Now that project is about three or four years out, but we recognize that it's a real potential economic development asset to Wooddale and they're ahead of the game in terms of planning for that kind of thing and we hope that our efforts will come through in that regard.
Excuse me, I would like to invite Peter to tell his grandpa who owns La Hacienda in Addison, how fancy, what he might like about Wooddale.
Well, he doesn't own just La Hacienda, he also owns Vesimi Taco and La Madalena.
Have him, have him call and talk to us after the meeting, would you please? Okay. Thank you, Peter. Jack, do you have a question for Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Can the Wooddale pool be enlarged and cleaned up a little?
Okay. I'll take that one. The problem is, at this level, it is a city, the city council has nothing to do with the park district, pool situation or anything with, with fire districts or anything because they have their own taxing board and they, they do do that. But to enlarge that pool, they had talked about enlarging the pool, they don't have enough footage or enough room to enlarge that the way they want. To clean it up, all I could tell you that I will approach the school, the park district tomorrow and tell them that we had a meeting here and you ask that question and we'll see what we could do to that. But that is other taxing bodies and if you really want to like, write them a letter, write me a letter and I'll be more than happy to drop it off to them, you know, for you or you can send it to the park district, but that is a separate taxing body. But I see your point, I think we do need a bigger pool. I think, I'd like to see one like Itasca with diving board and everything, but we don't have anything to do with that, but the park district does, but I will voice my concern that we had tonight.
Thank you.
Stephanie, your question is for Alderman John Caddella.
Are there any plans to build a recycling plant in Wooddale?
Stephanie, unlike Alderman Roy Wesley, I didn't get that much of a notice to be able to answer this question.
Thank you.
Found out about 10 minutes ago. Alderman Coles, you want to jump in before I move on?
I'll help you out.
Because I can, I can take it Joe, but go ahead.
I'll help you out. The only recycling that we have is two times a week, I believe, we have it at the city services on, on... We have it at the City Services on Central. I think it's on Central, isn't it? And they take computers, TVs, and stuff like that. Only personal, not businesses, but just private. And they have that twice a, twice a week, I believe. So that's the only recycling that I know of that is going on. And I'm also on the Clean Air Act, and that's the only thing that I know is going on. And that... City Services. City Services building, yes.
Stephanie, I can add a little bit more, I think, to help answer your question. Well, there are no plans to build a recycling plant. Wood Dale is involved in recycling. In addition to what Alderman Coles just mentioned, we do, right here in City Hall, have a drop-off for unused prescription medications. And I think at least once a year, we have a paper shredding program. And that's all done right here with the, with the city involvement and city staff. And then additionally, we have a recycling program through our garbage contractor, who you see come by to your house every Monday, and soon to be every Monday and/or Tuesday. And they take recyclable materials, the plastics, the paper separately. They take that to a regional recycling plant, wherein efforts to combine resources and energy, many municipalities, many cities and villages participate in that type of a program for more of a, for more of a regional recycling situation. And then, of course, during the summer months, we also have our leave and brush pickup. And that material, the yard waste, is brought to yet another facility where it's allowed to compost, much like your class was able to show us in your, in your video. So we do participate, but I do not know of any plans to actually build a plant here in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elena, your question is for Alderman Sam Lewitin.
What do you have to do to be elected a city council member?
Well, that's a, can you hear me? Okay, that's a very good question. And I'd like to start it by prefacing the definition of city. In different parts of the United States, the words city, town, and village have different meanings. Because the meanings are legal terms, and it's not large and small as you might think. In Illinois, a city is a form of government where the elected officials to the council represent wards. You know, you listen to TV, you hear Chicago, and they talk about the aldermen. Well, when there's wards, they're called aldermen. In other areas, there are villages. And a village could be larger than a city. But a village has a different form of government.